to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Council --
Here.
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mayor Coombs, we have a forum.
Okay, let's stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at the public hearing items this evening or at final call, publicly invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now I need to get the minutes from December 1 approved. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of the -- or approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, that's been moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Mayor Coombs, we did have two items that were sent out after the original agenda went out. Item 9J, there was a revised council communication that outlined the Human Services Advisory Board recommendations for that item. In item 9C, there was a revised agreement regarding the ECO pass for employees where they removed from the terms and conditions the additional $2.50 Sky Ride fee, and that was it. They were in your agenda, they were just revised.
Okay, thank you. Is there a report from the City Manager?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, so first call, publicly invited to be heard is Georgietta Johnston.
Mayor and Council, it's nice to see you out in this cold weather. So, we are still looking for a house, and we are trusting that you are all trying to work out and help us too. It's almost the end of the year, and I feel Longmont's a beautiful city, as I've already told you, and I feel like that you people have the resources to help us some way, somehow. I wrote up a letter, I went down Main Street, I passed it out in several places, they accepted it. I got a call from a lady, but she lived out of town, and I told her we couldn't move out of town. So, I'm gonna be doing some more of that, and then I got a magazine here for rent that I just picked up that was free, and I was gonna tell you, it says in Greeley, that one bedroom, $7.45, two bedroom, $8.45, and three bedroom, $9.45, and then Loveland, or North Glen, it's got one bedroom, $8.50, and two bedroom, $1,000. This is, just came out in November. And it was Loveland, Greeley, and Fort Collins. Fort Collins also that I got, and I just browsed. And then Loveland is one bedroom, $7.80, two bedroom, $9.30, and three bedroom, $1,075. So anyway, I was just, I came because I feel like that you people were voted in to help us people. We are special people, and you are special people in some way, somehow. Something ought to be able to work this out. We just got a notice on our storage, it's $164 on January, so I'm believing that you are, that, you know, you were voted in to help us and make the city a wonderful city to live in, and we do not want to move. We've lived here for many, many, many years, gave a lot to it, so I feel some way, somehow, with the Lord, there's gotta be an answer for us to find a house. So, I feel like with the resources of the town that comes in, we, it's not that we can't pay, it's just that we can't pay a lot. And my husband was a little under the weather tonight, but otherwise, he would be coming. So, thank you for letting me talk, and I'm believing that you're gonna work all this out to help people. Lord bless you.
Joanne Curvis?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joanne Curvis, 1231 Monarch Drive, Executive Director of Arts Longmont. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the SCFD reauthorization that is on the consent agenda. I'm here speaking on behalf of Arts Longmont, as well as the organizations in Longmont. We have been meeting as a group of organizations, we've heard from SCFD and other proposals, and we came to the conclusion that at this point in time, in order to get the reauthorization of SCFD, which is very important funding for our organizations, that we need to get behind the task force, the SCFD task force reauthorization together and move forward. Those organizations include Arts Longmont, the Longmont Museum, the Longmont Symphony Orchestra, the Longmont Corral, the Longmont Theater Company, Art Walk Longmont, and the Firehouse Art Center, who all receive SCFD funding. The big picture of SCFD is, it's a unique funding source. Funding for the arts is difficult. It's dwindling, and we see general operating support specifically is very hard to get. And for us to have a funding source that specifically for arts, science, and culture is so important. We fight for every dollar that we raise, and nothing is guaranteed. A $1,000 donor this year might be a $200 donor next year, or not at all. You know, business sponsorships, we work very hard for everything we get, and we'd like to put our work behind getting this reauthorized. I know that there's other proposals that have come in. I know that people have not agreed that we're getting enough, but for the good of Longmont, we need to get behind and support this. Our arts organizations are asking for your support. We feel this is the best thing for our community and for our arts organizations. And yes, we always want more money. Who doesn't want more money? Who couldn't spend more money? But, in the big picture, I'm not willing to risk a couple thousand more dollars to lose $20,000, because where is that money gonna come from? Not just our organization, but all organizations in the Denver metro area would lose that money if SCFD does not get reauthorized. Where is that money gonna come from? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question, but I know that if we work together, and we go into the legislation united and say, "This is very important, and this is something the community, Denver metro area has supported, please reauthorize this, and don't lose the zoo, or Arts Longmont, or the Muse Gallery, or the Firehouse." And the greater good, in the big picture, is that we use all these resources. So, it's one pot of money, it's not a new, not in new sources of money. So, for me to get more money, it has to come from somewhere, and it's coming from another organization. Whether it's an organization in Denver or Longmont, it's coming from someplace. And so, we wanna see this reauthorized, and we are asking for your support, and we hope you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Honstein?
Good evening, Mayor and members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to make these remarks today. My name is Susan Honstein. I am a neighbor. I reside at 727 Pine Street in Louisville. I am here to speak to you a little bit about the SCFD. The regional SCFD tax was originally passed in 1988, and a lot has changed since then. Our region has grown by about a million residents, and 80% of that growth has been in the outlying counties, and we continue to lead the nation in growth. Our region has become more diverse culturally and economically. One of the basic principles of healthy regionalism is that all communities within the region must derive benefit from that shared district. Today, we are no longer a core urban center with close-in suburbs. We are a vibrant collection of cities, each with their own economies, each with their own quality-of-life enhancements, each with their own science and cultural offerings, and you've just heard how many wonderful things you do have in support here in Longmont. What served our citizens best in 1988 is not what serves them in 2015, and it certainly won't be what serves them in 2030, when the new reauthorization sunsets. SCFD patrons will still travel to Denver to see the best we have to offer, but many want opportunities at home to add vibrancy to their own communities. Longmont, Lone Tree, Parker, Broomfield, Lakewood, and Brighton all have new performing arts facilities of their own, and just the other day, front-page news in the Daily Camera was that Boulder citizens are seeking a new facility of their own in their revamped Civic Plaza project. Citizens in those communities want support for those venues. Citizens in those communities want local science and cultural programs to flourish and bring economic opportunity and vibrancy to their own communities. After 25 years of change in regional demographics and the geographic footprint of the district, it's time to update the funding formula. Our group of citizens is supporting an alternative funding structure that bases based on fairness to the entire district, addresses structural shortfalls for small and medium organizations, and is accountable to the taxpayer. What are the facts? The current proposed funding structure is disconnected from key measures that SCFD tracks and by which we measure value to the citizens. Those measures are attendance, school programs, and free admissions. These are the points of connection with citizens. These measures show us that too much funding is devoted to five Tier One organizations in Denver. In 1993, the Tier One organizations were the big draw, accounting for 55% of attendance. Today's funding pattern was based on that attendance distribution. By 2014, that percentage is now 34%, and the small Tier Three organizations have grown in attendance by 736%, and now account for 33% of all attendance, 36% of school programs, and 53% of free admissions. When we look at the funding distribution, the tax dollars are going, going to Denver far outstrip its contribution.
You only get three minutes, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, I close with, Longmont is sending $1.1 million in tax and receiving $94,000. The tax funding structure needs to be revised, and I urge you not to adopt SCFD's proposal this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Marie Jensen?
Hi there. My name is Anne Marie Jensen. I live in Lafayette, Colorado, also a neighbor. I am by profession a lobbyist, and am volunteering sometime with the organization that Susan represents called Friends of Arts and Cultural Equity. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the process for referring the ballot measure to the voters. This is a statutory change. It has to be voted on by the legislature. While the SCFD has made a recommendation, the final say about what gets put before the voters is the legislative process. This is a representative government process. You have democratically elected legislators who will make the decision about what is to be put before the voters. SCFD is saying that we cannot have an argument about the formula, and it cannot be tweaked without jeopardizing the reauthorization. What we would like to respectfully say is, we are all part of this district. We should be able to talk about it. We should be able to say, "Is this the right formula?" Susan gave you some data. 84.4% of the money in the SCFD is currently going to Denver area programs. Now, there may be, and is likely, a reason why Denver is getting the vast share of the money, but is that the right amount? We recognize that the five flagship institutions that are in Tier One deserve more support because they're regional draws, they're regional centers. But is 84.4% the right amount, or some other amount the right amount? And to say we can't talk about it, that the legislature can't consider it, that Longmont can't reevaluate itself, what, how much money is fair to get from Longmont, Susan just told you that you, you give $1.1 million and get about $93,000 back. I am sure that your citizens are tired of Longmont getting the short end of the stick when it comes to regional cooperation and regional taxes. I encourage you to be part of a solution that is fairer, more equitable. The FACE proposal is a gradual shift to, by the end of the 12-year tax, 20% for Tier Threes, of which you have several in the, in Longmont. It's not a lot of money, but it is a shift over time. It's not a lot of money, but it is a shift over time that starts to recognize that communities like Longmont have developed their own arts and cultural facilities and that they are getting a significant portion of the attendance and deserve more of the money. So I would encourage you to think about this and ask you to not rubber stamp what the SCFD has put before you, but be part of this solution of finding another approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fawena Salazar? Oh, excuse me. It's Edwina. It was spelled F-A-W.
I am. That's an F.
It looks like an F, Edwina.
It does.
It looks like an F.
Yes, I have a twin named Fawena.
Wow, it does.
Okay. Good evening.
Yes, it does.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of City Council. I'm speaking on Item 9H, the plan to conduct a homeless services assessment. The R Center is totally supportive of identifying and examining issues, exploring options for strengthening Longmont's services for people who are homeless. We have been stretched to deal with the number of homeless in Longmont and the problems that we are experiencing with alcohol and drug abuse and people who have mental illness in that population. So we would love to have more data on that, and it is only with accurate data that informed and difficult decisions can be made regarding the scope of services and how those services are funded. But first of all, I would like to clarify some statements in the proposed scope of work on the Attachment A, as well as the report of the R Center's funding that was in the news article. On Page Eight, it stated that 15 folks are banned from the R Center. That number is actually the number of suspensions, that people are really eligible to return to the R Center. And the number of banned is six, and that is for violent behavior and actual injuries to our staff. So, and that's just an example of some of the things that we're dealing with, with our folks who are homeless and who have drug addiction and mental health issues. As an update to the report, the 10 shelter beds that are designated for Longmont residents at the Boulder Shelter have been filled, totally filled this sheltering season. We, the R Center is actually providing round-trip bus passes to the shelter, and every evening we are sending 10 people, and they're coming back during the day. So I want to also clarify that the 45,000 stated in the newspaper article really is spread across all of our basic needs, services per year, not only our services to people who are homeless. The R Center budget, just to give you a perspective, for day services is $200,000 per year. And already this year, we've served 816 unduplicated individuals in that program. And then the other broader perspective is that we've conducted 23,000 interviews across all programs in the R Center so far this year. So the point I'm stating is that, by and large, our day services are funded through private means. The city funding represents 4.5 of our total funding, and so we've sought grants and other funding for our homeless services. And so I think all this data will come out in the survey, and I'm happy about that, and we'll be totally cooperative with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwina. Counselor?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. My name is Ken Smith. I live at 2441 Broadway in Denver. I'm also a neighbor. I like to consider myself a neighbor, even though I am from Denver. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Citizens for Arts to Zoo. We're the metro-regional organization that is working to secure legislative approval and voter approval for the SCFD reauthorization recommendations of the SCFD Board of Directors. I want to start by thanking your deputy manager, Sean Lewis, and Longmont Museum Executive Director Wesley Jessup for recommending in their joint memo to council that council adopt the resolution of support for the SCFD reauthorization recommendations of the board. We agree with those recommendations and respectfully ask for council support. You'll notice in some of the materials that we're handing out, one document is titled "2015 SCFD Reauthorization Task Force Report," and I'd like to draw your attention to specifically, there's a lot of great information in there, but specifically Pages 11, 14, and 15, I think, do a nice job of encapsulating basic information that we'd like council to consider as they move the resolution forward. The reauthorization recommendations of the synopsis represent enormous, hard work, hard-fought, and very difficult-to-achieve concessions and compromise which occurred over the course of a three-and-a-half-year process. I think you've heard a previous speaker suggest that perhaps there has been no room for reconsideration or consideration of alternative points of view. I want to assure every member of this council that all of the issues that we continue to hear about have been debated agnozium throughout the three-and-a-half-year process. When we compare the flow chart, when we compare the flow of dollars to Tier One, Two, and Three today, with the SCFD board adopted recommendations spanning 2018 through 2030, we are literally shifting $37.3 million away from Tier One organizations toward Tier Two and Tier Three organizations. So I could say more about that, and I'm happy to stick around for questions afterward if you'd like me to do that. But I want to acknowledge specifically the leadership of Joanne Kirvis, the Executive Director of Arts Longmont, for her leadership and guidance navigating through the SCFD reauthorization process in the Longmont community. I also want to thank Dr. Kathy Cousin, who serves as the Boulder County Arts and Cultural Community Representative to the SCFD Board of Directors. She is a 15-year Tier Three founder and owner. She's been through the SCFD reauthorization process 15 times, and I'm here to tell you that there is no one on the SCFD Board of Directors who's more of a staunch advocate for Tier Threes, Tier Three funding than Kathy Cousin. Thank you for your time, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. All right, that ends our first call. Public invited to be heard. Now it's time for readings on the second, or ordinances on second reading.
Mayor Coombs, your first item is ordinance 2015-63, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.42 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Art in Public Places. We do not have a staff presentation on this item, but Sandy is here to address questions if you have them.
Okay. Any questions before I open it up for public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-63. Is anybody from the public like to speak on ordinance 63? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-63. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2015-63.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. No. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2015-64, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. Again, there is no formal staff presentation, but we do have staff in the audience.
Okay. Is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-64. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-64.
Mayor Coombs, I guess we did have a staff presentation.
Ah. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. And I'll be brief. I just really wanted to, since we have a new council member, I wanted to explain our appropriation and CIP process for the benefit of Councilmember Peck. So our city charter allows you all to make additional appropriations by ordinance for anything that was not included in our original adopted budget. These will typically include expenses that are associated with grants, or donations, or any other additional revenue that's above and beyond what we have in our budget. From time to time, you're also going to see expenses for, expenses that are covered by fund balance rather than revenue. So these are, again, items that were unanticipated at the time that we were putting our budget together, but we don't have an offsetting new revenue source to cover that. It will be coming from fund balance. And we do try to call that out, or we do signify those ones on our council communications so that you know which ones are being covered from fund balance. So we usually bring these appropriations to you after accounting has closed the prior fiscal year. That's when we will start bringing them to you on a regular basis. We'll bring them to you typically monthly if we have funds that need to be appropriated. If an urgent need comes up before April, you may see one come to you before that timeframe. The April-May appropriation will be a very large one, because per our city charter, all of our appropriations, with the exception of the appropriations in one fund, and that's our Public Improvement Fund, legally lapse at the end of the year. So the Public Improvement Fund is the only fund where those appropriations don't lapse at the end of the year. So in order to continue those appropriations from one year to the next for projects that were not completed in that year, we need to reappropriate those. So this is going to be very, a very large appropriation, the April-May timeframe appropriation because of our carryover. All of our CIP projects, again, our city charter and code require that in order for us to award construction contracts or contracts, we have to have the full appropriation in place in order to do that. So our CIP projects will appropriate the funds for a construction, even though, even though that construction may extend beyond a given year. And so at the end of the year, those appropriations lapse. We have to reappropriate them to carry on that construction. So along with the appropriation ordinance, we'll also bring you CIP amendments that will require your approval, because these CIP projects, the need for the additional funds in these CIP projects requires an appropriation, so you have to approve that, so you have to approve the associated CIP amendment. So that's one type of CIP amendment that you're going to see. The other type, or on the council agenda tonight, there are two CIP projects associated with this appropriation that require your approval. That's PR 56, the Park Building Rehab and Replacement, and PR 186, Infrastructure Rehab and Replacement. And that council communication does explain the need for those additional funds. Our city charter has a provision that allows our city manager to transfer unencumbered appropriation balances from one expenditure classification to another within the same department. So after a prior conversation with city council regarding how this pertains to CIP amendments, council agreed that the city manager can approve the transfer of funds between CIP projects if the funding being transferred is indeed budgetary savings and does not impact the ability of the project the funds are being transferred from to be completed as outlined within our CIP document. And then per our city charter, the report of those transfers by our city manager needs to be brought to you all. So the second type of CIP amendment that you will see on consent agenda on a quarterly basis, we bring these, try to bring these ones to you quarterly, are those CIP amendments that our city manager has approved. So I really don't have anything specific in regards to the appropriation or CIP amendments that are on the agenda this evening. I just wanted to brief you on our process, but we can certainly answer any questions that you have.
And I think a practical example is one of the questions that I was going to ask in city manager comments at the end, is you also have the council contingency budget. And so unless we hear otherwise from council, our plan is to roll that over in that budget amendment. And this is actually just a specific example of what we have to do with all of the budgets.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Teresa, for that explanation. It was great.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess I've opened the public hearing. I guess I'll reopen it in case, seeing no one, I'll speak on ordinance 2015-64. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-64. Councilmember Santos?
Well, I'm not the fastest on the button, but I'll move ordinance 2015-64.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Next item is ordinance 2015-65, a bill for an ordinance approving the Town of Lyons contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of the city's North and South Water Treatment Plant properties to the Town of Lyons. And there was a presentation on first reading, so we do not have one on second reading.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that'd like to speak on ordinance 20? Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Peck has a question?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay.
Actually, I was going to move ordinance 2015-65.
Okay, well, we'll have to wait to have the public hearing first, so, excuse me. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on ordinance 2015-65? All right, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-65. Councilmember Peck?
Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2015-65.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2015-66, a bill for an ordinance establishing a charge of 75 cents per month for emergency telephone services, also known as 911, for wired, wireless, and voice-over Internet protocol subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2016. There is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay. Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-66. Anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2015-66. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to move ordinance 2015-66.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is the consent agenda. First item is 9A, ordinance 2016-01, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Bowes Annexation, generally located south of Nelson Road and east of Airport Road, and zoning the property PUDR residential planned unit development. Public hearing and second reading of this item is for January 12th, 2016. Item 9B, there are two ordinances, both of which the public hearing is scheduled for January 12th. The first one is ordinance 2016-02, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 1648-060 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Renewal of Building Contractors Licenses. And ordinance 02, ordinance 2016-03, adding Chapter 16.28 of the Longmont Municipal Code adopting by reference the 2015 edition of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Item 9C is Resolution 2015-103, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the regional transportation district for employee eco-passes for 2016. Item 9D is Resolution 2015-104, supporting the scientific and cultural facilities reauthorization recommendations of the SCFD Board of Directors. Item 9E is Resolution 2015-105, increasing the number of commissioners on the Longmont Housing Authority. Item 9F is Resolution 2015-106, approving the library consortium agreement with the Flat Irons Library Consortium for Shared Library Services. Item 9G is Resolution 2015-107, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for parent education services. Item 9H is Resolution 2015- Item 9H is resolution 2015-108, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a homeless services assessment. Item 9I is resolution 2015-109, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for funding for the downtown transportation study. Item 9J is accept recommendation for additional 2016 Human Service Agency funding for HOPE, homeless outreach providing encouragement. Item 9K is suspend the council rules of procedure 25 and set the 2016 city council meeting dates accepted for a regular and study sessions as proposed. Item 9L is approve changes to the council rule of procedure regarding order of regular session agendas and direct staff to bring them back at the next regular council meeting for final approval. Item 9M is accept 12 capital improvement program amendments approved by the city manager. Item 9N is approve two capital improvement program amendments, and staff does not have a need to pull any of the items.
Councilmember Peck?
Can I pull an item?
Sure.
Okay, great. I want to pull item 9D, R2015-104. Is that what it is?
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move the consent agenda minus 9D.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, item 9D is the SCFD authorization, and Sean is here to address questions.
And I'd be glad to give you a little background information on that, too, if you'd like.
Okay.
So as you may recall, back in September, mayor council, you all heard from some of our local arts groups, who were really on both sides at that time, of the two different funding scenarios that were being proposed for the reauthorization of the SCFD tax. You may recall that some folks in Lafayette had requested that you all support the, what was known as FACE, proposal. You heard from two citizens today regarding that. And then you also had a request from SCFD to recommend supporting their task force proposal that had come up. So in October, I sent you all a memo, an informational memo, just saying, we're not really finished researching this item, but we really, at that time, were recommending that you take no action, because we were really still kind of collecting information on that, too. So at the request of the mayor, we pulled all the arts groups together in town that had received funding in the past. And so that was a lot that haven't received funding in years, but we wanted to get everybody who had ever received SCFD funding in Longmont, pull those folks together, and just talked about the proposals. And so that was on September 23. At that time, we concluded that we really didn't have enough information to make a recommendation to you all about that. And so we agreed to bring in representatives from both FACE and SCFD to meet individually with our arts groups. So in October, we had representatives from both sides of the funding scenarios come in, present information to us, and had a really pretty lively discussion with both of those organizations, or the groups representing those organizations, and started kind of coming to some conclusions, but there still wasn't consensus in that for which funding scenario we could really kind of get behind and support as an entire community. So we did some more research. Some of our arts groups' representatives went to some of the SCFD board discussions on this item. And ultimately, we concluded a number of things. First of all, that SCFD, as represented by Joanne and the SCFD representative, that they had done an outstanding job through months and months of task force deliberations, really pulling together all the different elements of both funding, multiple funding scenarios, not just FACE and not just SCFD, including folks from Longmont. They did a survey of about 300 people. They had volunteers, about 350 volunteers that worked on that task force, the work of that task force, again, some of whom were from Longmont. So we really felt good about the work of that group. The second thing that we concluded was that FACE, while they had a more catchy kind of funding scenario with a 50% for Tier One, 30% for Tier Two, and 20% for Tier Three, there really wasn't a terribly defensible way of splitting that allocation, that it was more kind of for marketing than it was representing the actual fiscal needs of the organizations. And third, that the funding scenario that was proposed by SCFD and the task force, that it did result in an increase in funding for Tier Three. It just wasn't as great as the funding scenario represented by FACE. Fourth, that, as mentioned in the presentations, that while Boulder County really is kind of a juggernaut of sales tax, and we don't get back as much as we give, we have a disproportionate number of citizens and school groups from Boulder County that go to the Tier One organizations in Denver, that include the Denver Botanic Gardens, the museum, the zoo, et cetera. And so, again, we are a net exporter of funds, as was mentioned, but we do send more folks down to Denver for those assets than most counties. And last but not least, that the FACE proposal, while again resulting in more funding for Boulder County organizations, it was really modest because Boulder County has so many Tier Three organizations. So we have actually more Tier Three organizations that the funding is split between than any other county outside of Denver. So FACE may have given more money to Boulder County, but it was split between so many groups that it's still pretty modest when you look at it on an organization-by-organization basis. So in conclusion, city staff did, as well as all of the arts organizations in Longmont, which we did survey, did conclude that we wanted to recommend a council approval of the SCFD resolution.
Councilmember Peck, did you want to ask a question?
I do. Actually, I have a couple of questions in there, basically clarification. If I understand it correctly, the amount of money that goes to Boulder County, it goes not to the cities or the municipalities, but it goes to the Boulder County Cultural... What is it? Council? And then that money is divided with Longmont getting $20,000. Am I correct in that assessment?
Actually, it's more than $20,000. If you look collectively at the Tier Three organizations in Longmont, it's more than $20,000, I believe. But you're correct. So the SCFD in Denver, where the admin of that program is done, gives money to county arts, kind of arts and culture groups. So Boulder County has one that Longmont is represented on. I can't remember who our representative is at the moment, but... So that organization then divvies out the funding among the groups within the county.
Okay. And to determine the amount of money projected through 2030, is that on projected sales tax?
Yes, ma'am.
So if I'm correct, if the sales tax goes over the projected amount, then that percentage would increase to Boulder County, right?
That's correct, but just in a smaller amount under the SCFD funding proposal than the FACE proposal.
Correct. So actually, the cap on the different municipalities is set by Boulder County Commission, not by SCFD.
I can't definitively answer that question, but I'm sure we could, there's someone in the audience that might be able to.
Where I'm going with this is that if the individual municipalities are unhappy with the amount of money they're getting given, they can actually go to the Boulder County Council and ask for that cap to be raised. So it isn't really what the SCFD is saying they get, it is the Boulder County Council.
Right. Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, you're exactly right. We actually had quite a bit of discussion among the arts groups and city staff about the fact that, in some ways, our beef is less with the SCFD and more with the Boulder County culture and arts, right, Cultural Council, because of the way the funding is split among so many groups. There was a suggestion that instead of splitting that money so many different ways, we should really try to focus on the strongest of the organizations and fund those. So your statement, your point is well made.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point for the emails that we got, was that if your beef is with SCFD, perhaps when the money actually comes out and you see that there's a raise in the amount that the Cultural Council gets in Boulder County, that's where you should go to have that cap raised. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I wanted to thank Assistant City Manager Sean Lewis and the rest of staff who did do a lot of research in this and to give us that report, too. I would really like to support this passing it the way it is. I think contrary to some of the information we've gotten, the SCFD reauthorization task force did a great deal of listening and adjusting things. And I come from, when I was a little girl and growing up in Denver, all of these organizations that are foundational to all of Colorado's arts were constantly struggling, constantly begging for money. This is the best thing that has happened to science and cultural institutions. It's given them some kind of steadiness, and it has made things blossom in a way that nothing else would. The arts are always very vulnerable, and this is one thing that gives them some kind of stability. So I'd like to see it pass the way it is.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's good to hear that the arts community here in Longmont is supportive. That's what I was looking for. I know that this is a council communication coming from staff, but I'm glad that Joanne came and you gave the information, Sean, about doing all the hard work, as Councilmember Christensen said, that staff has put into this to try to make sure that we're doing what's best for the arts community here in Longmont. So I move resolution 2015-104.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, it passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is general business, the proposed dates and topics for the 2016 council retreat. Sandy Cedar will make this presentation.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager on the other side, number two, I think in this case.
Number one.
I'm here to talk a little bit about the retreat. So as we had our conversation about council dates for 2016, the question came up around, what are we going to do for the retreat? So we are bringing you some different options to take a look at. This includes dates, places, and topics. So I would love to have direction on a date, a place, and some topics would be wonderful.
Mayor Coombs?
I'm sorry, say?
Give us...
Give you options. They're all right here. What would you like to start with?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm so glad that Wes Jessup's here. Since we have a larger facility at the museum, and we've had our retreat at the Nelson Plant for, and it's a great facility, perhaps we could have it at the retreat at the museum this year? Perhaps use the facilities that are there, the new technology and everything else, kind of show it off. I don't know about a date, but I think that would be good, plenty of parking, centrally located. Just a thought.
Mayor Santos, that is a wonderful recommendation, and depending on the date that you choose, if they're available, that is where we're holding it.
Wes will make it available.
Well, we'll take a look, so... Yeah. All right, so what about the dates? Is there one date that you appreciate over the others? We're looking at February. And, you know, this may be helpful if I talk a little bit about the topics. So in talking about this with our leadership team, one of the things that did come up is that this is perfect timing for the next phase of Invision Longmont. And so it really makes a lot of sense for us to spend, you know, some time on Invision Longmont as well as the Resilient St. Brain Project. Those two really are talking about the future of our community and the future of resiliency. If you decided to do those two topics, it's probably a day in those two topics, and then you could either have a one-day retreat, you could have a two-day retreat, you could add in other things, like we suggested, team building, and maybe some community involvement training, things like that. Or you could just really talk about the future resiliency of the city with those two topics if you chose. The early, the mid-February seems to work best for the Invision Longmont project, but they can hold on some of these things until March if you decided on that date instead.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's better to put them back to back, in my opinion, because that way you have some continuity between discussion topics. And the dates that I personally like are February 19th to 20th, so that's my motion.
Second.
I guess I'm fine with those two dates. Oh, visit Longmont, Sky Retreat on the 20th.
The 26th is the unity and the community.
Yeah, so that won't work.
Sean, visit Longmont, it's the 20th, right? That's what I have on the calendar.
Yeah. Councilmember Finley, I do believe unity is going to be later in the day, if that helps any. The other piece is that, you know, you could choose a one-day retreat, you could also break them up. You could do a Friday and then something else later on if you decide that you'd like to do that as well. Friday the 19th, one day, two topics?
Yeah.
My motion's 19th and 20th.
I amend it. It's still one day, Friday.
I can do the 19th.
I can do the 19th. 20th is visit Longmont.
All right, let's just do a one day, the 19th. That's the motion. All in favor?
I'm on motion to the 19th.
Okay.
And I will second that.
All right. I guess is everybody okay with... Should we vote on that formally?
Yes.
Please?
Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And let me just confirm the agenda. We're essentially talking about two topics, Resilient St. Brain and Invision Longmont, and not any other kinds of team building except maybe just a welcome breakfast kind of thing. Yeah? So we'll bring you an agenda next, a draft agenda next.
Yes, just for clarification, just for those that couldn't hear us, Visit Longmont, which I'm now liaison to, has a board retreat on the 20th. So that's the only reason. I do like those back-to-back, so you get that continuity, as Councilmember Moore mentioned. But if it's possible, Sandy, if for some reason we don't finish on the 19th, and we need to, you know, figure out some dates that are close together that we can potentially string together.
I believe your motion was the 19th. We will make it work.
Wow.
Councilmember Bagley?
Woo! Go, Sandy.
I move that we have it at the museum.
Second. I thought we already...
Okay, let's vote on that.
You said you'd make it happen. I'll make it happen. Wes is here, let's make it happen.
Are we voting?
Yes, Dave.
What if he's booked on the 19th?
This is the law, four votes.
He might be in the hallway, but he'll be there.
All right, that passes seven to zero.
Got your work cut out for you, Wes.
That's it, right? What else do we need?
Yeah.
Mayor Coombs, your last item is your board and commission appointment, so I'm going to move to the podium for this. Mayor Coombs and members of council, we have some ballots in front of you. This is not a secret ballot vote, but this is a ballot vote, and we will read those out loud. So the first item is your airport advisory board. You have two regular member terms ending December 31st, then you have some unexpired. Generally, in the past, you have voted on the full terms first and then gone to the unexpired. If you want to do that, then vote for two individuals.
That'll make it interesting for you, Sandy.
Where's number two? Wait, there's four now?
Well, you're only voting for the two full terms.
So I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
Just before, I mean, before I vote. So my question is, but when we did the interviews, it said two regular member terms and one unexpired regular member term.
There are actually two, there's an additional one that was not, we did...
You're voting for two for the regular.
Good. Okay, just checking.
Regular.
Regular. Not unexpired, which they have to...
I think he was just pointing out that when you interviewed originally, there was only one unexpired, and there are two.
Which I was confused about.
All right. Councilmember Bagley voted for Kurt Hanson. Council... Oh, Hanson and Daniel Peters, I'm sorry. Councilmember Moore voted for Kurt Hanson and Daniel Peters. Councilmember Christensen voted for Kurt Hanson and Scott Long. Councilmember Peck voted for Kurt Hanson and Scott Long. Councilmember Finley voted for Leaf Johnson and Linda Jordan. Councilmember Santos voted for Leaf... Councilmember Santos voted for Leaf Johnson and Melinda Jordan. And Mayor Coombs voted for Leaf Johnson and Daniel Peters. We have one individual, Kurt Hanson, who received four votes, so can have one of those regular terms. Then we have two, Leaf Johnson and Daniel Peters, with three votes each. Those would be your top two vote-getters of the other four, if you want to do that, or we could put all four names in.
Why don't we vote for the second full term?
Second tier, Leaf Johnson and Daniel Peters vote for one of those individuals.
So they got the three?
Yeah.
Come on, Sandy, hurry.
Mix them up a little bit. Okay, Councilmember Finley voted for Leaf Johnson. Councilmember Santos voted for Leaf Johnson. Councilmember Peck voted for Daniel Peters. Mayor Coombs voted for Daniel Peters. Councilmember Bagley voted for Daniel Peters. Councilmember Moore voted for Daniel Peters. And Councilmember Christensen voted for Leaf Johnson. Daniel Peters received four votes, so we'll get the second full term. You now have three people that got votes on the last round. You have four people left. Let's vote for the unexpired, vote for two for the unexpired terms, and you can make a motion on who gets which one. Vote for two.
Hold on, just, okay, yeah, there.
Okay, Councilmember Christensen voted for Scott Long, and Daniel Peters has already been appointed, so. Did you want to vote for somebody else? Daniel Peters has already been appointed. He got one of the, he got the full term, so if you'd like to change your... And Daniel Peters.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's okay. They undervoted.
They undervoted.
Scott Long and Leaf Johnson, okay. Councilmember Peck voted for Leaf Johnson and Scott Long. Mayor Coombs voted for Leaf Johnson and Melinda Jordan. Councilmember Santos voted for Leaf Johnson, Melinda Jordan. Councilmember Finley voted for Leaf Johnson and Melinda Jordan. Councilmember Bagley voted for Leaf Johnson and Scott Long. Councilmember Moore voted for Leaf Johnson and Melinda Jordan. So Leaf Johnson got seven votes, and Melinda Jordan got four votes. So those are your two, I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume, I guess I should make sure, I want to clarify, does Leaf Johnson get the 2017 term? And Melinda get the 2016 term?
I moved that. Yeah. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who moved that? I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep Bagley moved.
Vote.
Okay.
That Leaf Johnson gets the longer term.
Correct.
Seven to zero.
Art in Public Places, you have two applicants, one unexpired term ending June 30th, 2017.
I'll give it to Harold. Make sure number two comes up next. Oh, Colonel.
Only because I didn't think about it. He just was quick. I'll get him next time.
Councilmember Santos voted for Randy Long. Councilmember Finley voted for Randy Long. Councilmember Peck voted for Melanie Sidwell. Councilmember Christensen voted for Melanie Sidwell. Councilmember Moore voted for Randy Long. Councilmember Bagley voted for Melanie Sidwell. Councilmember Coombs voted for Randy Long. Randy Long received four votes.
Councilmember Coombs, you got busted.
I'm sorry, Mayor Coombs, excuse me. Reminiscently.
You said we're punchy.
Board of Environmental Affairs, there are two positions. You only have one applicant, so I need direction on whether to appoint this applicant or re-advertise or vote.
I move that we appoint her unanimously.
Someone second that?
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
Okay, and then we will re-advertise the opening. Cable Trust, you have one regular member, one applicant. You can do the same thing, re-advertise or appoint.
Mayor Coombs?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we appoint Philip Huff to the regular member.
All in favor?
Callahan House Board, you have two regular members and you have two applicants. You can appoint, point and re-advertise or just re-advertise.
I move we appoint.
I move we appoint.
Second.
I moved first.
Second.
Okay, so we move the second in?
Okay.
My question is?
Yes.
Should I not vote on this since my wife's on it? All right, I'm going to vote. All in favor?
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Golf Course Advisory Board, three regular term members and you have two applicants. What's your wish on that?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we appoint both applicants to the regular members.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Historic Preservation, you have a regular term ending 2018 and an alternate, so... You want to vote for two and then, okay, vote for two individuals, two of the three.
Colonel.
Get it, it's a pattern. It's a pattern. It's a pattern. Sean, look, it's coordination. You're an athletic dude.
Except when he went over the handlebars with the mayor. He's only been here since 5:30, so what a little loopy, come on.
That's late.
Brian wants to chew into his cheesecake.
New council means that I need to be in bed by nine.
Councilmember Moore voted for Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. Councilmember Finley voted for Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. Councilmember Peck voted for Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. Councilmember Santos, Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. Councilmember Bagley, Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. Councilmember Christensen, Sandra Salazar and Glenn Sherwood. And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember, Mayor Coombs voted for Sandra Salazar, I'm sorry, and Glenn Sherwood. I was trying to read what he wrote.
I move that we appoint Glenn Sherwood. He's the historic preservation guru. I move that we appoint him to the term ending in 2018, regular member, yeah.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, that passes seven to zero.
He got the 2018?
Yep.
Okay. And Sandra will be the alternate. Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, you have three openings, three are regular term members ending 2018, one unexpired term ending 2017. So I need to ask how you want to vote on this. Do you want to vote for four and then take, make a motion, or just vote for the three?
Let's vote for, let's vote for four.
Okay.
Okay, vote for four, please. And then I'll need direction if the vote isn't clear on. One's just full terms. Yes, voting for four.
Hey, Gabe? It's odd.
Is it?
Yeah. What does that mean? Does that mean I can eat it now? I'm pretty sure I could cut into that, no problem.
Oh, it's still kind of hard.
Pretty sure it'd be okay.
There's some in the step session.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Moore voted for Charles Searns, David Spencer, Kim Sheprak, and Michelle Wilson. Councilmember Christensen voted for Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, and Madeline Wood. Councilmember Bagley voted for Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, and Madeline Woodley. I said that name wrong. Council, Mayor Coombs voted for Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, whoops, Michelle Wilson and Madeline Woodley. Councilmember Santos voted for Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, and Madeline Woodley. Councilmember Finley voted for Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, and Madeline Woodley. And Councilmember Peck voted for Charles Searns, David Spencer, Michelle Wilson, and Madeline Woodley. Okay. The four individuals who have the most votes, Charles Searns, Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, Madeline Woodley, all, Charles Searns has seven, and the other three have six votes. So I need some direction on which one will receive the unexpired regular member term. You want, staff suggestion might be that Charles Searns be at one of the full terms since he had the most votes.
Right.
And that you take a vote between the other three on which one will get the short term.
I was going to move that we appoint David Spencer to the unexpired regular member term, because I put some notes beside them and I don't really know what they mean.
I think it's better that we vote.
Let's vote. Just for one person.
For one person, and that one person then is the one that gets the unexpired term.
Okay. You're voting on Kim Sheprak, David Spencer, or Madeline Woodley?
Okay.
And I don't have housing.
And we're voting for the...
Unexpired.
Unexpired term, because they'll all get a term. This one will just be for the unexpired term.
A year shorter.
I do not have housing.
Housing.
I'll give you one.
Are you out of ballots?
I'll give you one.
Just take one in.
Give me one. Hook me up.
Cross out Coombs.
Yeah.
I want mayor voting twice. Councilmember Coombs. Come on, Valerie.
Oh, never mind. I found it, so I'm going to still use the mayors because I sound like they're powerful. So this is the unexpired regular term?
Yes.
You don't need that power, huh?
I don't need the power.
Councilmember Peck voted for Madeline Woodley. Councilmember Finley voted for David Spencer. Councilmember Santos, Kim Sheprak. Councilmember Christensen, David Spencer. Mayor Coombs for Madeline Woodley. Councilmember Moore for Madeline Woodley. Councilmember Bagley for David Spencer. So David Spencer and Madeline Woodley tied for the unexpired term, so you'll need to vote for one of those.
Because I voted for...
So we're going between...
Kim Sheprak will get one of the 2018 terms.
Yes, you're all looking at each other.
What is it, Gabe? Just pick.
Oh, I'll pick. You want me to pick?
I mean, you don't tie vote.
Fine, I'll pick.
I move that we appoint David Spencer to the unexpired term.
Second.
All right.
It's a year difference.
Okay. Thank you. Master Board of Appeals, we again had no applicants. We have actually three alternate, one regular and two alternate positions open on that. So we will re-advertise, but if you know anybody that would qualify for this board, Master Board of Appeals, we would really appreciate some help in recruiting for that particular board.
I actually recruited some, I talked to somebody the other day about it.
Nobody applied. So Museum Advisory Board, again, we have a regular member and no applications, so anything you can do to help us, Museum Advisory Board? So we could use some help in recruiting for that one as well. Parks and Rec, now, you have two regular positions open and a lot of applicants, so vote for two individuals. Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Jean should come up. And then we'll have Dale and Karen and Jim and Joni.
No, because they've seen how much.
Councilmember Moore voted for Aaron Clark and Sharice Montgomery. Councilmember Christensen voted for Aaron Clark and Sharice Montgomery. Councilmember Bagley voted for Sharice Montgomery and Carly Mulder. Council, Mayor Coombs voted for Sue Alberg and Sharice Montgomery. Mayor Coombs gave me another blank vote there. Councilmember Peck voted for Aaron Clark and Sue Alberg. Councilmember Finley voted for Sue Alberg and Sharice Montgomery. And Councilmember Santos voted for Sue Alberg and Aaron Clark. So Sharice Montgomery received five votes and will be reappointed. And Sue Alberg and Aaron Clark each received four votes, so if you'll take one more, vote for one of those individuals, Sue Alberg or Aaron Clark.
You want Dale next? Other board.
Okay, Councilmember Bagley voted for Sue Alberg. Christians, Councilmember Christensen voted for Aaron Clark. Councilmember Peck voted for Sue Alberg. Councilmember Moore voted for Aaron Clark. Mayor Coombs voted for Sue Alberg. Councilmember Santos voted for Sue Alberg. And Councilmember Finley voted for Sue Alberg. So Sue Alberg will get the second regular term for Parks and Rec. Planning and Zoning Commission, please cross out Jean Allen. He withdrew from the application process.
Was it just a second question from Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. One of the, so Carly Mulder had come in. We didn't appoint, I didn't mention this, on the Board of Environmental Affairs. She was the woman that came in and said that if she didn't get Parks and Rec, she was interested in serving on the Board of Environmental Affairs. And so, and so I would move that we actually appoint Carly Mulder to the Board of Environmental Affairs.
All right. All in favor?
Okay, wait, let me, let me make. Bagley and Santos?
Yeah.
Carly to BEA.
Thank you. Yeah, I got it, I just need to see the votes.
Votes, yeah. We need to see the votes.
Okay, thank you.
Valerie needs to see the votes.
I need to see the vote, sorry. Or hear it, I didn't care. Planning and Zoning Commission, cross out Jean Allen and vote for one of the four remaining applicants.
Hold on, I'm confused.
Planning and Zoning?
Planning and Zoning, Jean Allen has withdrawn. Oh, well, he was on my list and crossed out, so.
Does it still call at the bottom?
Okay, Mayor Coombs voted for Wallace Palmer. Councilmember Bagley voted for Sam Seif, Seifey? Seifey, sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Christensen voted for Charles Burnot. Councilmember Moore voted for Aaron Rodriguez. Councilmember Santos voted for Charles Burnot. Councilmember Finley voted for Sam Seifey. Councilmember Peck voted for Charles Burnot.
Is that four for Charles?
No, that's only three, and two for Sam, and one each for the other two individuals. So, do you want to just vote for the two top vote-getters? That would be Charles Burnot and Sam Seifey. That would be Charles Burnot and Sam Seifri.
Melinda, Melinda, sweet little Melinda Yale was on. Where's Melinda Yale?
Okay. Councilmember Peck voted for Charles Burnot. Santos voted for Charles Burnot. Finley voted for Sam Seifri. Bagley voted for Sam Seifri. Coombs voted for Charles Burnot. Moore voted for Sam Seifri. Christensen voted for Charles Burnot. So Charles got four votes and will get the unexpired term for Planning and Zoning Commission.
We can't serve on two boards?
No.
Senior Citizens Advisory Board, you have three individual, no, you have four individuals and three regular members. Did Madeline get...
Madeline's on, so...
So if Madeline got appointed, then we need to have three.
Can I move that we appoint all three of the remaining candidates to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board?
Second.
All right. Should we move the second in? Let's vote.
Thank you. Transportation Advisory Board, one applicant, one opening.
Move that we appoint her. Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Is that a seven, okay. Visit Longmont, you have one opening and one applicant and what's your...
Second.
Joan, council has never been so efficient.
Could you raise the hands against, it's two, four, five, to two, Santos and Christensen?
Five with, with, to, uh, again, dissent.
You dissent.
Yeah.
You can't abstain. But you can dissent.
Okay.
What was, you raised your hand, was that a four or?
Dissent.
Okay. Five to two. Will be appointed. Okay. Thank you.
We have, Sam said he...
We need your microphone on, please. Sorry.
Sam said, Sam Seifri said he would be happy to serve on any board that we thought he was qualified for and so we didn't elect him, right? Or did we? Okay. Is he qualified for that one remaining board? I know it's not for the Master Board.
Well, there's more than one remaining, actually.
Oh, okay.
We have Museum, we have Master Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
We're two.
Okay.
And I think there was one.
It would be a shame to not have him.
I think that was the only other one.
On something, I think he'd be wonderful on the museum board.
Should we, Councilmember Santos? Oh.
Should I move to do that?
Well, he wants to have a discussion point first.
Okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've known Sam Seifri a long time and I believe he would be a good board member on any of these boards. However, I would really like for him to actually choose, potentially choose with that other candidate. We did have a discussion with her about if she didn't get on this board, would she be willing to be on BEA? We did not have that discussion with Sam. I would, you know, I would encourage and I will do so when I see him or email him that for him to reapply for a board that he thinks he would be suited for. I think he'd be a great board member, just I don't want to put him somewhere where he feels off.
And staff will also contact him and let him know that.
Ask him if he'd like to live at the museum.
Yes. I think he'd be excellent.
Okay, thank.
He's liking this, man. This is, this, says all of the reviews of Star Wars are awesome. Shh, down here. Dude, they say it's awesome, Gabe. They say it's unbelievably...
Okay, so now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. No Hanukkah is, I believe is already passed. Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate or, and if you don't, just be with your family and friends, be safe. Today was a little crazy out there with the snow. I want to thank our Public Works and Natural Resources crews that have probably been out since a very early morning and a prob, since two in the morning and are probably still out there tonight. So again, Merry Christmas to you all. If you're traveling, travel safe.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to have a business of the week this week. A great place to go Christmas shopping is Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. You can find something for everybody at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and it's at 205 Ken Pratt Boulevard. Also, next week, while the kids are out of school, there are some fun things to do at the museum. You should check that out on the website. Lots of, and I believe Santa's going to be there on Tuesday, so take a look at the museum while your kids are off. Be big fun.
Councilmember Christensen?
I want to also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and every other holiday you celebrate and happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa. I want to thank the two lovely gentlemen who helped me as I was plowing my way with my grocery cart through the King Soopers parking lot that had about a foot of snow and it's really hard to get the grocery cart to move. I think everybody is particularly nice to each other at Christmas time, but I think that Longmont always has pretty nice people. So thanks again and everybody have a lovely time.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to say thank you first of all to Polly Christensen. I know it was kind of selective, but Polly bought me and Councilmember Santos Darth Vader hot drink mugs.
What are you saying?
So, thank you. And it's not, and I don't know whether it's pathetic that we were the only two that got these or, or, but anyway, I think it's really cool and it will be used. I don't drink coffee, but I'm just going to fill it with hot water and enjoy it, yes. But this is awesome. Also, Councilmember Santos, two years ago, I believe that this was voted, the Longmont dessert.
My wife makes it.
Yes. Vicky Santos makes a killer peppermint chocolate cheesecake. And so it weighs probably, what, eight pounds? No joke, it's heavy. So thank you, Councilmember Santos, and...
Well, let Vicky know you said that.
Yes, yes. And then also, you know, just, I just wanted to just let it be known that I think that Councilmember Peck is doing great. Council's fun still, welcome, and can't wait till Thursday night when we get to see Star Wars. And again, Councilmember Santos and I and even City Manager Dominguez were able to score some tickets. So if you haven't got your tickets yet...
We paid for them.
Yes, we paid for them.
We paid for them.
Yes, on Fandango. So we didn't get, we didn't get any favors. But I would encourage everyone to support your local business and it's Bagley's Business of the Week. It's the Regal Cinema, Star Wars showings only, but yeah, go.
Well, I'd like to give kudos to Platte River Power Organization that had one of the most complex, complete shutdowns of the Platte River Power coal plant. And they had, you know, hundreds of different subcontractors out there on site. They work, and the employees there worked 16 hours a day, including through Thanksgiving. So when we were all enjoying having our lights on and eating Thanksgiving dinner, they were working 16 hours a day. But the most remarkable thing is they had not a single accident. I think they had one cut finger, so one first aid incident, but that's, that's it. And they moved their whole control room, the distributed control system, they had tens of thousands of lines of code to control that plant. And when they brought it up, they only had two trip offs. So it was like totally unheard of performance. So kudos to Platte River and how hard they worked over Thanksgiving holiday when we were all enjoying our families. And I also would like to thank Gabe Santos for trying to get me back up to 160 pounds. I'm going to be slow for...
It's non-dairy, Mayor. Come on.
Yeah, right. It's non-fat, non-dairy. Thank you.
No calories.
But thank you.
Zero calorie cheese.
And again, everybody be careful and have fun and I sure am enjoying my, I've never had a four-wheel drive, but beyond it, it's fun to get out there before Bob Allen's got a chance to plow the streets.
Do damage.
Yeah. All right. City manager, any comments? Oh, sorry, Joan. Councilmember Peck?
I would like to wish everybody happy holidays as well and let you know that next light, neither snow or rain or fog will deter them because they hooked us up today and I am the first council member to have next light.
The new councilman, really. First time rodeoist.
I'm so jealous.
I take it, I take it back. Council's no fun. Aw, man.
Okay. City manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor Council.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.